Can get started and get out of here by eleven thirty. We think, I'm gonna get this name right this time, this is Dr. Sam King. Look, I'll call him University. I know who this is. And I'm ready to.
Yeah, so like we said earlier, we were talking about process today. I think we talked about student achievement data and law a couple of weeks ago, but it's process today. So the next forty-five minute segment is of course GSBA budget process. And as you say, Dr. Sam King and Julie Rane are here to take us through it. I'll turn it over.
Good morning, everyone, and happy to be here. So to chair members of board and superintendent Beasley. So our charge is really twofold, two-part. So we'll begin with budget and we want to make this a conversation and it will be a fast-paced conversation and thirty thousand foot view. And so we're gonna take you along this path in the, at the pace you want. We're not at the pace you want, you know, pretty fast, but we'll engage in questioning because after that piece then we'll move into best practice for superintendent evaluation, you understand that there? So we're probably looking at spending about thirty minutes on each piece. And what that's going to do is allow you to reflect on your current practices, your past practices, and then be able to come together as a governance team to talk about what your next step might be. Yes?
Julie Rane, I do have Emma Benton, our CFO here. She shared some documents in the event you all have questions relating to the topic of budget.
Apparently.
She's Emma Benton.
Hello.
Hi.
All right, happy to meet you, glad to have you here. Great. All right, so I'm Sam King. I am currently overseeing the superintendent search process with State, Georgia School Boards Association, as well as I provide board governance training and alignment of curriculum for what Georgia School Boards Association is now evolving into doing in the needs of boards like yours. And so we are working now, which is different, to customize that process. And that's one reason Julie is here, you know, because of that process of evolving. And she has multiple years of experience as a school board member, as well as communication background. And also it's moving into transitioning into member engagement. I'm gonna let her talk to you about that piece. And so this is, this is like coming home to me because back in the early nineties, I was in Platte County. And so, again, I applaud you for what you do. I thank a lot of Dr. Beasley, you know, I've got to know him over the past two years, for the awesome task that you guys as a unit that you've taken on. We'd love to support your work in any way that we can. And so Julie, I want to introduce yourself.
So I'm Julie Rane. I was on the City Schools and Caters School Board for twelve years and I survived it. And I actually worked with Dr. Beasley at Cav Tech, those I was heading communications for a few years. And you got a good one here, you got a real good one, stealing all the good ones out of the Cav with Nunes and Rob Simpson and Jamie Wilson. You got some really great people, so. So I feel like I'm coming home too a little bit, you know, I'm a product of the Cav guys.
All right, so we're gonna move quickly. We tag team, but thirty-five years for me in public education and spent ten years as a superintendent. Started out as a teacher, so I'm a teacher, always will be. My parents are first generation college graduates. And always open anything I say, even if people don't hear me say it, I say it anyway because I have to pay homage to my parents because of them being first generation in the suburbs, deep south Georgia. And the things that I know that they encountered to make me whatever I am. And they were teachers as well, so. With that said, we will begin. I want to first, before we quickly move into the discussion of the budget, I always work to ensure that you know as a governance team that role and the importance of the finance piece. And so I just, I just throw this piece up because this comes from the domain seven. You know, there are eight domains. And the seventh one is financial governance. And I want you to eyeball that top part because it speaks to the awesome role and responsibility that you have as a board, along with your CEO as superintendent. And so this is really the guiding piece. And I know many of you have gone through many budgetary processes already. But each year you work to make it better, more effective, more efficient, more laser focused on your needs and your strategic plan and your blueprint. But you see that first piece where it describes this work? That the board provides guidance to the superintendent and sets sound fiscal policy so that the school system is an effective steward of all resources to support what? What is it? I'm seeing.
It was change made.
Do the team.
It was change made.
That's why I raised that issue because when you build a budget, that's at the core of what you should be doing and what you're looking for. And notice that you are there as a board to provide guidance to your CEO. Your CEO brings you the recommendation of the budget. You defer to him as that authority figure to bring you that recommendation for a budget that meets these things, that aligns with your strategic plan, all of those items. And so I wanted to begin with this because many times when we have discussions and training with boards, they miss this piece in terms of what role does the board really play in this? What role does superintendent play? This is where governance teams get in trouble because of these kinds of things. You see standard A, you see what it says here. I just mentioned this. Board of Education, upon recommendation, the superintendent adopts the budget. Of course, you gotta adhere to the law. The Board of Education adopts policy, a sound fiscal management and monitoring of that process. Julie, any comments here before we shift gears?
This is what we are charged with doing as board members, one of the most important things that you can do and what you fund, what you value.
There's much more there. So Dr. Beasley and your team, I would challenge you to, you know, at some point, take a look at that because that's what, what guides the work. So we will move quickly forward. All right, so governance team best practice in terms of building the budget. I want you to take a look at those. We're not gonna read bullets to you. We want to read some of these items we know that you already know. But we want you to stop us throughout the process wherever you need to stop and we will do so here. Really reiterates what we just mentioned. I'll draw your attention to that second bullet because it says, it speaks to collaboration. And I think that that's of utmost importance because you as a board must collaborate with your superintendent to create a relevant budget that is aligned with your strategic plan. So that's extremely important. As we continue through this in terms of best practices, you know that by rule, by practice, by expectation, you have to have a process where you have your input from your public. And I know that you have that. I know you build a budget calendar to do these things and all the items we just mentioned are important throughout that process. So Dr. Beasley, is this an opportunity for you to remind your board of how, of your cycle for your budget calendar?
Well, they just recently approved the timeline, so they're very familiar with the timeline. We don't go forward without their approval. And so we're in the earliest part of that timeline right now. So this, this opportunity is, we have, clearly Ms. Williams, the new board member, and it's always good for everyone to get this type of information. And then of course, we wanna just, you know, they went through the process last year because of pretty robust process. And you wanna always get better and better every year with that budget development process.
Right, and with that said, sometimes you're in the midst of fluctuating revenue. You know, seems like you never have enough. And when that happens, you have to have ways of balancing your budget. And so unfortunately, it's a matter of where you're gonna put it. And so you have to have strategies for that. So we're gonna, we're gonna, got some pieces in here that will speak to that too. So we'll move pretty quickly. Julie?
So how far into your current strategic plan are you?
It's, this is our new five-year cycle, so we're within just a few months of our new strategic plan.
Okay, so you can talk about how you're tying your budget to your current strategic plan?
Correct.
And you all feel comfortable with that process because what you value is what you spend your money on. And one of the most important things is to make sure that you're being equitable for all students. So that you can meet them where they are and take them higher. So a gifted student is gonna have different needs than autistic student is gonna have different needs than an ELL student. So we need to make sure that we're not, you know, it's not just about equality, but it's about equity. Let's show the next slide, Sam. You can see the difference between equality at the top versus equity. So can anybody explain what the difference is?
Take a look at that because I know you've seen various examples of equity versus equality. This is one that we think kind of paints a, a pretty, pretty.
Pretty telling.
On the picture, absolutely. Keeping your finger on the pulse of what matters about equity because it is different. And certainly when, as you build your budget, you want to ensure that you give each school and each child what he or she needs. Not each child and each school the same thing. And that means you're gonna give more or less to one or the other, but what you give is different. That's important with boards because sometimes it's a difficult conversation because when you present that budget, it shows that variance. Then one wants to know why did this particular school in this area receive this and this school didn't? Because there's, there were some variance in needs for what those schools did. You didn't give them less, you just gave differently in terms of resources. Absolutely.
And as a school board member, you're, you're unlike any other elected official. You represent all the districts, all the kids, not just your own. So you have to make sure that all of your kids are what they need. Your constituents might not understand that, but that is the oath that you took. And that's the job that you have to do. And sometimes that job involves educating your parents about what you are here to do. And so when we, we have lots of conversations around equity. I'm sure you are doing the same thing. And these are the major things that involve equity, most of funding. Do you put your best teachers in, in the most at-risk schools? Are your discipline policies equitable across the board so that all kids are being treated fairly? But funding is the big one. That's what we're here to talk about today, so.
And your highly effective teachers, all those things come into play when budgeting comes into play. You know, where, what, hopefully you have, you want all highly effective teachers. So you know, you have challenges, you all have challenges with that. So what, where are they?
And do you?
Are they, are they in your, or do you have those folk in advanced place course work, rigorous course work? Or, or are they in the most challenged areas, whether it's ninth grade where the case might be? So those things come into play in terms of how you spend your money.
Like do you use services for those hard to, to reach professions in special ed or math or whatever the, the need might be? An incentive for the high achievers to go to some lower performing schools? You know, what kind of policies do you have around that and can the budget help that?
So each of these four really speak to an equity agenda because the way you budget around, of course, finally it's clear for your curriculum and how you roll it out, your teachers, your discipline policy, all of those things. Any, any thoughts or questions here before we move on? No, all right, good.
So what is funding equity? It's your dollar distribution per people within your school district and your school to school based on the need. Always remember, it's all about need.
Go back to the picture. And you're saying.
It just hits you over the head. You know, those cyclists are our kids.
Right. All right, so you have in your packet what we call the central questions for funding. Dr. Beasley wanted this to be kind of a ten thousand, thirty thousand foot view. Because you're going to continue this work after we go on. We're just providing you with tools, some tools and some nuggets that the Beasley got you for your compensation. So I'm not, we're not gonna talk about each of these questions, but we hope that when you're ready to go deeper with either this or some of your other items, that you'll invite us back to have kind of a work session with you and customize items for your needs and, and receive credit. You're gonna receive three hours credit today. So we're gonna make sure you get your documents signed for that, a whole board of governors as well. But that first one, you know, what is the school budget? All right, so you know, we, everybody in here should know that answer, but it is good to revisit that and have that conversation about it. Next, who decides what goes into the budget? Notice that there's a joint approach to that. One can exist separate from the other. Superintendent can't receive, can't create the budget and stop it and expect it to work because you all are gonna have to endorse that budget. You're gonna have to speak to it to your public, even when you have cuts or if you're adding or if you're modifying, all those things are gonna be important. How's income determined? You all should know this, but think about how much importance really rests on you articulating this to your stakeholders in terms of how your money flows, you know, from federal level, from state level, from the local level. Where is the burden, what percentage at each level? And so, and you are just gonna have some examples of how you can do some activities with that, some even with the public. Next one, our state and federal monies determine. And so you'll have that if you have those answers. Next one, how is state, state aid allocated to your schools? And you all are already talking about FTEs and all of that. And I know you talk a lot about your, your local tax burden and how money fluctuates, how it flows. It is good for the board to understand this from a, again, kind of from the ceiling, not the floor, in terms of being able to talk to your, your public about this, especially when you're, you're trying to go point about adopting budget. And when you look at that, your local revenue in terms of where it comes from, I'm gonna talk a bit about this very briefly because you see that much, much of that local revenue is gonna come from your property taxes. You already know that. And how do you articulate that to your public, especially in tough economic times when the value of homes might fluctuate? Maybe you change your millage, some of those other things, how do you prepare to go out and talk, especially if you're going post-lives and weather?
I had a parent tell me why they, they pay property taxes and they give it to the school system, don't have the kids.
You know, that's a, that's a, that's kind of an age-old claim now. I mean, you would, you would hear that.
Right.
Okay, so, and then you hear that from stakeholders such as what you described for those that are in the sixties and above feeling as if they shouldn't have a burden. Well, you know, sixty-one have dozens of others, then we ask, but for you as a governance team, you've got a clear message on how you articulate that. Those, because you are producing those same quality young adults that are gonna be in this community and providing for those same people.
Correct.
Whether it's emergency medical texts, whether it's when they need to go get their car serviced, whether it's high-level medical intervention in hospitals, doctors, those folks are the people that you, you prepare. So that's a message that has to go to them.
And that's paying for social security later.
A good response would be, and a lot of young people pay social security and they don't get so sad.
Did you ask them, uh, who paid for your education when you came?
Well, I said, they said, I don't have children.
And look after many of them.
They just grow up, they're grown.
But every, all groups of society are contributing to the.
The whole.
We pay social security because that, that provides benefit when we're older. And they pay tax because that, even if they don't have children, because that stabilizes our society.
So how about, so how about you educate children, you keep them in a positive, becoming productive adults so that you don't have to support them down the road?
As a prisoner.
As a prisoner or, you know, somebody framing your house or?
It costs much more, how a prisoner than a rich, than a cheap child.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, that's, make a good point. I, I don't know how much your address calls for to your student here is right now. But when you compare what you spend per job to what you spend to thirty percent to incarcerate, I mean, it's a huge gap, huge gap.
I also remind them that our kids will make the future of our community. And I also remind them about the time when we lost our credibility, how things fell to a low point and we're still struggling to come out of that point now. And they understand it further now, the people that live around us.
So these are the main categories of what we spend our money on in the budget. If you look at the first one, that's eighty-five to ninety percent of your budget for most school districts. And if you ask an entrepreneur out there who owns his own business, her own business, and you tell them that about ninety percent of the budget is gonna go to staff, they look at you and laugh because it's just not very sustainable because you've got all these other things you've got to fund from transportation to books and things that are mandated that the state doesn't pay for. So that's another recent line. You can tell your constituent, you know, the state doesn't fully fund education, that's why we have to have a lot of their share here. So these are just the main categories of what is, comprises your budget.
Julie, I should, just for the benefit of the board, Ms. Benton sent us a PowerPoint that had some of this data in it. Looking at slide nine, ninety-two percent of our budget for this year nineteen is salaries and benefits. Eight percent is operating, so that's after we cut many areas fifty percent.
That's right.
So that gives you an idea.
But that's typical. And it doesn't leave a whole lot of wiggle room when you have cut back to the middle of the year for the state, like what's happened in previous years, and hopefully those days are all gone, so.
But on a good note, that's why we're building our master schedules better so we can capture more FTEs and then clearly capture more QBEs in our allotment sheet. Like last year, we increased our revenue for this year about four million. And for our FTE process for this year, we've gone right now, as of my last review, we've gone over a million above what we earned last year, so that's good. And so we're working to do that, but that helps with the generation of revenue. But we've gotta continue to keep expenditures, you know, at, at eight percent. You know, we need to bring those expenditures down while we increase revenues.
And that's hard when, you know, the state health benefits go up. It's six point two percent. It's crazy and you don't get any actual benefit, so, but we have to pay them. They look at you.
Everything, TRS and.
TRS, TRS is a big one. So, and one of the, the important things to know is how much percentage is spent on instruction? You know, the state used to require us to have sixty-five percent. Do they still require that?
Well, it's because of the, all the waivers. You can, most districts waive out of it, but we still try to stay within because it just looks good.
Well, it does, but you know, a librarian wasn't counted with them and that librarian is very important to students.
But most districts are within that limit.
Okay. So what happens when we have to reduce our costs? Because you don't want to increase the mileage, right?
And you, you've been, you've had this experience already, so.
It's very painful.
Many systems have, so you know that.
No first-year superintendents, you have to go through that.
Oh man, so you got the dollar scars, you have the dollar scars.
It's really hard.
Scar tissue that comes to that.
And, and the important thing is that you have a process in place that you get state health input when you have to have those horrible discussions, those really painful discussions. My first board meeting, I had to, it was our first strategic plan in many years and it was analysis, we were gonna be closing forty percent of our elementary schools. Three of our seven, and the kid is really small, right? It was so painful. But we spent the whole year going through the community input session before that strategic plan was approved and we're better off for it, but it was very painful. And anytime you have to close schools, you draw lines, it's not fun.
Right, because you, 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 you're talking about people. That's what you're speaking of, you can close the schools and minimize the jobs. And you all have lived this, but when you, you get, the boards have to understand when you get to a point where you have to close the deficit, you heard Dr. Beasley just mentioned, ninety percent of the budget is. Yeah, so you gotta close the gap. You don't have a lot of wiggle room. You know, it is not as if you really want to get jobs, but sometimes you're forced to do it. And sometimes CEOs have difficulty getting their boards to understand that. If they don't do what you all are doing now, make a clear understanding of what the budget really looks like. And then, then doing it, and doing it through attrition and all those kinds of things is important.
And this year, you know, like Dr. Beasley said, and this will be his first year, but I think that, you know, we got a lot of flack and it was really one time, I really did not want to vote for the budget. But, you know, I had to, you know, because we had to do it. But I think a lot of our public did not understand that Dr. Beasley had actually proposed some really major cuts to us. But he did, well, he actually sat down with his, he sat down and talked to staff first. And, and the staff, the, what we really came out, our recommendations were really what the staff proposed. Because we could have really laid our teachers, you know, we could, there were a whole lot of things. And then the thing, you know, the biggest problem that I really had was with the class last. But then I found it very interesting when I had a conversation with another friend of mine that works in Gwinnett and what we increased our classes to, that's normal for Gwinnett. They have large classes like that. But nobody in Gwinnett is, you know, I, I don't hear them out, you know, raising and saying about that. And that's just normal and I was very surprised to find out that that was normal, you know. But it, it was really rough. I, I, you know, I hated it more because otherwise we had a great year and, you know, our test scores and everything improved. So, you know, we're, we're claiming a better budget process and season next year.
But what he, what you just described is the best practice coming from a superintendent because before, before he brings you a recommendation or an initial draft of a recommendation, typically he will have a process.
Right.
To engage with the staff around what the priorities of the strategic plan are. And to talk through the cuts when they offer recommendations, give input feedback. And he uses that with his staff to bring it to you. It's still not easy.
It is.
But at least then you have all of the moving parts involved in that. And so I applaud you all for doing it in that manner because otherwise it could have been very chaotic.
I think, I think the hardest part is to help people understand that when you have ninety-two percent of your budget in personnel cost and you've already reduced your operations in many areas by fifty percent.
Right.
The only place you can go is into personnel, right? There are only, there are only two ways you can reduce personnel and benefits. You can either lay off, eliminate jobs, well, you can eliminate jobs, that's one way. But there are two ways to eliminate jobs. You can increase class sizes, which means you reduce the number of teachers that you actually need. Or you leave class sizes the way they are and you just eliminate contracts and you let some folk know that they don't have a contract. We chose not to do that. We would rather, in light of, you know, the, the opportunity we had to increase class size, we made that decision which reduced the number of teachers we needed by about two hundred and forty-eight, which we could absorb that through attrition, retirements, et cetera. And so no one was not going without a job. Then we had to keep salaries posted for another year. And so, but I've been there, I've been a teacher before. I've been, my wife said, oh, they should tell you, I've been paying slips. I know how that feels with children that you gotta feed. And so when we make a decision, it's not made, it's not, it's not one made very lightly from a recommendation from the board. For me, it's not lightly because I know people need jobs, but we also need teachers. And then I also want to see situations where people lay off a lot of people, but then in August they hire them right back because you just can't sustain without having those people. So we wanted to avoid that situation. And then we, we studied our class sizes and we saw that we had room to increase class size without it being terribly inconvenient to our teachers and to our students. And even now with the increase in class sizes, if I look at the analysis that we're monitoring, we still have a little room. We, we can't raise them again, we wouldn't. But the point is, I just need our community to understand that, you know, it's one or the other when you got to, when you got all these increases in benefits and TRS that I can't control, we can't control, this board can't control, but I'm already at ninety-two percent with salaries and benefits. I gotta figure out how to cut and I've already cut maintenance and operations in many areas by fifty percent. And we gotta keep buildings, you know, looking.
And your question is that you're bringing a balanced budget recommendation for a budget to the board, to.
Balanced, that's correct.
And that's why we go to DC this year, we need to let them know it's there to stop the increase in everything because we can't afford to pay for it down here, it's too much.
That's what I was just about to suggest. And talk to your, your state representatives. All of those, talk to your state representatives and get your parents, even more importantly, they want to hear from not just other elected officials, they want to hear from parents because they think they're the only ones that vote, of course, we vote too. Get your PTAs involved and put pressure on them.
So as a community representative.
So as a community representative here, I think one of the issues, since we're talking about what happened last fiscal year, I think one of the issues that the community had was that it seemed to be all of a sudden that we did not know where the deficit came from. And, you know, as a, a point of fact is that we were all of a, all of a sudden just told that there was, and we still don't really have a clear number, thirty, forty million dollar deficit. So as someone. So as someone in the community, we just didn't, it seemed like it just hit us all of a sudden.
Well, let me make sure.
Contracts had gone out and then, you know, we started hearing, you know, there's this deficit, there's this deficit. And I think, you know, it may have been before Dr. Beasley got here that everything started compounding and then he was the person that was made to put, you know, to have to hold, get the reins of everything. But I think even still in the community, because of the history of things that have happened in the past, even before I got here, I think if we're going to state to the community that there's a deficit and that we need to do some of these things. And by the way, everything happened on that list, mileage went up, teacher salaries froze and class sizes up. So all those things on the list, same money, all of those things happened to us in Clayton County.
So, so let me tell.
So I'm, just one more thing, one more thing and then, you know, I'm sorry, Dr. Beasley. You're the man. But what I just want to say, like, if we're going to have this situation that affects the whole community, is it possible that the community see the numbers? Like, how did this happen? Okay, it happened, but how did it happen? So the speculation has gone out for so many different things. It was bonuses that teachers got, it was increased benefits. Just show us the spreadsheet of how everything happened so we can make sure that it doesn't happen again. And what can we do to be good stewards so that we're protecting what we have? And I think that's all the community was asking and as of today, we still haven't gotten.
Well, let's, let's make sure, I don't think you have gotten, but let me make sure we're very clear. In twenty sixteen, we had a fund balance of eighty-two million dollars and this is on the PowerPoint this Benton sent to you. We had a fund, listen to this, eighty-two million dollar fund balance.
Yes.
At the end of twenty seventeen, that eighty-two million had been reduced to forty-one million. That's a forty-one dollar million spend in one year. Those were not one-time expenditures, those were recurring, make sure you understand the difference, recurring expenditures. See, if you go into your savings account for a one-time purchase, that's one thing. If you go into your savings account for a recurring expenditure, that's an entirely different matter. So these were recurring expenditures, so it went from eighty-two to forty-one million. So if I had gone, if I had not reduced those recurring expenditures by forty million, I would have gone from forty-one million down to zero million, right?
What's your fund balance now?
Well, right now, because we, we implemented a freeze, we cut expenditures, we're at nineteen, we ended at nineteen million. And so now we're trying to build it back up.
And what's the percentage of your total budget? You get to have it between five and fifteen percent.
That's correct, right now it's, it's.
Four.
It's, it's low.
Four point nine nine.
It's low.
And that's unhealthy.
Well, and that's.
That's why you're doing what you have.
And so to, to the point, you said, what, what was the, the cause of the reduction? Those were not only just retired, benefits, TRS expenditures, benefits.
Right.
We had a lot of, of unearned positions in this district. A lot of positions that we were basically paying for that were not built into the master schedules and we were not earning money. That's why we had to shift the instructional site facilities. That was about ten million dollars, I had to shift them to, basically I had to dissolve that position and fund it federally. Reclaim it, reclass it, rename it, read job description, or whatever you want to call it, and fund those positions differently. Because I was spending ten million and wasn't earning anything from the state on those positions. So we had to do that. We had to, of course, we had to reduce maintenance and operations where we could. We had to basically figure out a way to stop spending forty-one million dollars that was coming out of the savings account. See, when you have a large savings account, you can spend it for a one-time purchase, but you can't spend it for recurring purchases.
So what I would suggest, and I'm sure you already have a process and you've already started, we always started a lot silver for the adoption at the end of June, right? And your CFO presents to the board, you know, every month or every other month, depending on how, how your agenda works out. And the CFO will let you know, okay, these are the, the new stage unfunded mandates, this is what it's going to cost us. And so you walk through that process, it's always in, on your website.
It is.
And I invite parents especially to show up because education funding is complicated. It's just so complicated for even administrators to understand, much less parents and lawyers.
And to the board's credit, all of the financial information is presented on a monthly basis.
Right.
It's out there.
So no surprise is when.
It's, it's very transparent, all the budgets, if you go to the website, they're out there. The monthly reports, they're out there. If anyone has any questions, and everyone knows, I don't have a problem, CFO, we don't have a problem answering any question about finance.
But there's so many assumptions that you have to make early in the process, like what's your tax digest going to be for that year?
That's correct.
You don't know that until right at the end. So that's why you probably have a first draft, a second draft, a third draft, until you get to the final. And you can look back at last year's and at this time, this was our assumption and this is what the actual were. So we know how we're hitting the mark and to make sure that we're planning appropriately.
So this is the government.
The doctors' team were also dependent upon the state's budget as well.
Yeah.
And that budget is not normally adopted until after the legislature.
After the legislature, and that's usually April.
And so we've got, so we've got a lot of variables that are at play as we build these budgets. But I, I believe that we're better positioned as a district because we're, we're not in deficit spending. We've identified, we're not going into our savings account. And so we should see, as long as our revenues continue to trend up and our expenditures stay at bay, I think we will be okay.
We'll start to feel the hell we fund out.
Should, should.
And just like with public schools, I was going to say, the county schools, your CFO is the most important person, absolutely. And if they don't tell you, you know, the superintendent who's who's there, whatever, they don't tell you to stop spending and to stop right here and you, you know, and if you're not listening to and you say, go and do this anyway, we'll fix it next year and then this and another and we put what we're going to put down on the paper for whoever we're going to put it on, on the paper, that's how things get messed up. So, you know, you know, it is what it is.
And I was going to say, this government's team has had, you've been forced to make some very important decisions about budget. So just listening, I just urge you all to continue to communicate, be transparent, all of those things. And to comments here from stakeholders, continue to have the process to articulate to them where you are.
And there's always written public comment at all these meetings and if there are issues, to make sure that your parents know, that your community in large know, so that there aren't any surprises.
And embedded in, when what you have that we're leaving with you does center on that about there's good news and sometimes it's not so good news. There's a way to communicate that, so you want to talk about that activity.
Yeah, just real quick, we're running out of time. But here's just a simple sheet to help guide your conversations with stakeholders. So what percentage of your budget comes from the state? And what is funded locally? I know when I got on my school board back in twenty of four, we got sixty percent from the state. When I got off in twenty sixteen, we were getting thirty-three percent from the state. So it had done a flip flop from Arkansas, you're not paying the majority from local tax funds. So that helps you frame that conversation, the state keeps funding, the, the funding cutbacks really happen, and here's why. And this is what we, but this is what we value. So if you look at this, what do you charge for people? You know, and how does that relate to the state average? Are you above it, are you below it? Do you, do you know what you spend for people?
I'm looking at the particular bridge.
Oh, for people?
Oh.
For people, I can't remember.
Nine?
Seven, over eight thousand.
Seven, over eight thousand.
It's kind of around average, eight thousand average across the board.
That's under.
Oh.
Yeah.
So that's why we, we start for legal requirements and we're certainly, we're not eating, the money we use to join everything is below average.
And so what's been your mileage history? What is the value of the mileage? You know, we're twenty?
We're max.
Max.
So you can't go above twenty, right?
No.
You don't like the cap, they go.
We have to cram all of it in, we have to stay, don't. Can't go higher than twenty.
Wow.
So this, this one page is like the one for white paper that usually.
Yeah.
You'll be able to pair up and kind of fill it in and compare your notes and to see where you are. But of course, we're not going to do that, we're just leaving it.
You don't have time for that.
We don't have time, but you know, like one of the things we've got down here is school tax on a house of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is like, we don't have a lot of those. We need to look at the, what the tax is on the house of a hundred thousand dollars. And that's still high in a lot of.
I just use that figure because that is the average.
Right.
In the state. So how does that compare if you had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home to the county next door? Or anybody that you compete for students with? And so that they get more bang for their buck?
Yeah, but in actuality.
Yeah.
Looking at a hundred thousand, a whole hundred thousand, it's very easy. But I'm, and but I think I give more bang for their buck with what we have than the next county up there.
Yeah, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home here is going to be pretty thick, right? Compared to Henry County or Clark County.
So, all right, we're going to shift gears.
Yeah.
We've got fifteen minutes to do this last piece, because I think you can go through all that and another feature that we can do at ten fifteen. Another question was, all right. And so we're going to spend fifteen quick minutes on a high-level view of the evaluation of the superintendent. What does it mean as far as governance? What are the expectations, all of that? Of course, evaluations you do in executive session, so not that, this is about best practice. This is about procedure, about process. Who's, who, who in the room has not gone through this process before evaluating a CEO? Has everybody done it?
One.
One? Okay, all right. Okay, so you're, you're amongst experienced people. So however, this is another one that you have to work to continue to get right and there are best practices around this. And sometimes relationships are ruined between the CEO and boards and board members or vice versa when it's not done correctly. So you want to talk a bit about that, that process and the importance? And as we did with the first piece on the, on the finance, you need to pay close attention to this particular slide that's here because this, this is not something that is just nice to do. It is something that you must do. And so this is taken from domain six, under personnel. Remember I told you there are eight domains and standards that govern what you do as boards? And so this one, we see standard B, the Board of Education, Evaluation Professional Performance of the Superintendent. But embedded in this, if you're looking up at the top where it speaks to sets performance expectations for evaluation work of, sets personnel policy approved or denied personnel actions, to enable him or to manage the system for, to improve what? I always ask you to do that. Student achievement.
Student achievement.
Student achievement. So all of this is really about student achievement and that's what sometimes we tend to forget, even in the finance piece. That when you're building that, you're building that so that you even need some children. Evaluating superintendent is based on whether your tenants are linked to, to that as well. And so these bullets, you have this, these bullets are also reinforcement of that same thing. What I like to do, you have these essential questions that are there, I want to move into a piece that I think you can spend more time on thinking about. Which, Julie, you want to talk about that before I move to the next?
So as, as board members, how many employees do you have? So hang on. You've got one.
You have.
You have one. And that's the only one you need to be concerned about. Let him worry about all the others, so you know, you know.
Well, you hold him accountable for the.
Yeah, for their performance.
You should have an awesome responsibility. You have to hold, you hold your, your, you see, your accountable for the expectations of those other folks. But you evaluate this one person, please.
And the importance of making sure that your process is a good process, and it, it builds trust and it builds your relationship with your superintendent. And it sets expectations early on so that, you know, you know where you're hitting the mark or where you're not hitting the mark. And what you need to do as a government's team to work together to make sure you're getting those things done, your strategic plan, that enhance student achievement. And so it's also just a, a great tool for measuring the goal outcomes or tied performance and salary. A lot of, a lot of school districts give bonuses based on how the superintendent hit or missed the mark from your, your outcome, they'll do that. But a lot of course started to go that way in the nineteen, late nineteen. So it's just a structured way for making sure that he has professional development that he needs and the resource that he needs to get his job done to your, um, thinking.
And you also have in your folder, what I consider a white paper that is a quick initiation tool, and you have to, so allow me to show this. When we're gone, this is one that I would urge you to take a look at and then reflect and ask yourself, are we following the steps in the way we move forward with evaluation of our superintendent? So front and back, this is one, this is one page that you have for two of you. But this next piece that you also have in your folder is one that I want you to spend some time. Now, I'm going to pause because that top piece, speech to the role the board plays in evaluating the superintendent. The bottom piece, speech to the role that the superintendent himself plays in doing this. So I want to ask you, because we got enough where you can pair, with your partner to your left, to your right. And, and look at each one of these squares, take five minutes, and we're going to close out here so we can say true to your, for another fifteen requests. But take a few minutes, about five minutes, and quickly go through these and ask yourself, are you utilizing your evaluation process in a way that you as a board, you meet those expectations that you see at the top for those six? And are you allowing your superintendent to play that role at the bottom with those six? So I'm going to pause, I want you to talk to each other about that, it's in your folder, but I can't see a small print. That's why we ask you to do it, because it's the best practice and to see where you are. And some of this will be something that you have to work to try to do. Do it. And you can push your station.
Yeah, yeah. I have one.
They got to finish the conversation.
I know it, I know it, it's one minute.
Remember the top piece, that's the role of the board in evaluating the superintendent. That's your role in how you evaluate the superintendent. The bottom piece is what the superintendent should be doing and expecting.
It, it depends on, you know, which evaluation regulations, like simply you're, yes, there's a training. When we have it online.
Yeah, I understand, you're a freak, oh man.
Did you sit down?
Because we have not yet, was it inherited?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
Is this online?
Good to say it. Yeah.
Oh, you do, it's gonna be beautiful.
Okay, I know that that was really abbreviated, but, um, someone give us a couple of comments on your thoughts on your role up here? I mean, as you reflect on what you are doing, what you have done, or what you should be doing? So, what are some of your thoughts on what you see here? Because this is just a good guide in terms of essential questions and things that should happen. From the board's role, for my superintendent's evaluation, and from the superintendent's expectation. Remember I said, I've been superintendent, I've been superintendent for ten years, and I've been in the, in the shoes, and, and I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. So, so it allows me to see how this best practice really does a lot. And so, um, your thoughts?
What I would say is that, um, we were talking about, um, setting the expectations, allowing evaluation, strategic plan, that we said there's a lot of things up there we don't do. And so, I would say that would be good to do it in a board retreat.
Yes.
That way, we can sit down together and actually work together as a board like we should be doing anyway. And then we could take it from there and have this evaluation, just like with teachers, we have it done by April or whatever. Everything into him by April. And then, he, he's got, uh, he's got April, May, just to get ready for the next year. You know, and so that's what we said, we just need to get more defined and get our plan together, you know? Um, and how we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna stick to that strategic plan and evaluate it based on that strategic plan, and come together as a board and actually do it together.
What is, is contract renewed everywhere?
Well, we just, he's just.
What time in the year?
He's just been here, we done one year, and so, you know.
I kinda wanna tie it to that process too.
Well, the thing is, is that, uh, if, our, our problem is, is that even in tying anything into that, when you don't do an evaluation until the school year is over, you're not effective. I think we're to the point that we're in, we're in on the right, uh, thought process. That, uh, you know, this is, uh, Dr. Beez has said, that we have to evaluate, you know, what you have been done. Because, and the other thing is that I mentioned to you, uh, as I said over and over, we also need to be trained to evaluate. And, uh, right now, we don't take, I think Dr. Beez has given us some, um, he's given us some goals, but the thing is, that's what we, we, we are, we are not setting goals. And that should be our responsibility as a board, for us to set some, some goals that we want and.
Right, you have to work with them together on that. He's gonna come up with the initial draft, and then, uh, that's a time for y'all to evaluate and see if it fits along with what you guys want.
Well, we did do that, uh, when I first, shortly after I got on the board for the first time. More detail, last year, I felt like I have a wrong document when I pulled it up to evaluate him. Five questions.
It wasn't even, because, you know, Mark has the domain and then it has like four, it has other regions. This is my question, just, you know, and it was, I, I was, I was, I called because I thought I had a, you know, the wrong one, or I didn't get the full thing, or missed a page or something. Uh, because I was looking, it was tied to the strategic plan, which is a good thing. It's just, I was expecting a breakdown in the, of each of those, you know.
So, so you need to agree to the.
Yeah, and that's, that was, that was why you got it, because we never sat down and had that discussion to even determine what we were gonna use. Before, we had used, uh, what Ms. Burrows is speaking of, this, uh, little GSBA. That's what we had used before. But we never sat down, we gotta do superintendent and never sat down as a group to even say, what are we going to evaluate him on?
You used the GSBA platform, you mean?
Simple. Simple, yeah, we used that.
But you should have created your goals.
Well, we didn't do that, you know.
Okay, see that's.
It was your platform.
Right.
But our strategic plan was in place and, and your executive session back in July, when he presented those just goals, and everyone talked about how it needed to be the broad or over everything, I set it up with our new strategic plan. And, and if, if you want, when you have executive session, I can pull up what I've already started, for, for you to use.
I, you know, I, I understand what you did, but my point is, is that we didn't collaboratively set anything up. We have, throughout our tenure on the board, we have acted as if the evaluation is what the superintendent wants to be evaluated on. We haven't looked at it as being two different, him and us agreeing on what it is that we want to look at.
So, so I've just listened to this really, really quick. Sounds as if you need to come together as a governance team, with your superintendent. Because the first step is to have that conversation around what it is that you value, which is usually your strategic plan, right? So, you have that conversation and agree on what you value. You may end up maybe five different, you can have a board retreat, yes.
And can we do it around February?
So, do you, when you, well, it depends on where you are in the cycle, what is this? This is now, uh, October. So you, usually, in, in January, February, you'd be doing your first mid discussion. That's a collaborative discussion you have, so, but that's, that's good to understand that you already have done the things I'm saying. So now, if you haven't done that, you kinda, you're gonna have to make some adjustments. You, you all have, just need to come in and have a conversation about where you are, and where you wanna pick up and move forward. Because you do have to come together to get agreement.
Yeah, right.
As a board and a superintendent around what you value. And usually, it's linked to your strategic plan. These are the things that we value. And on that sheet, it gives you those bullets, it's about four or five bullets that's there. One's takes to the strategic plan, one's about communication and engagement, and another's about leadership. You know all of those things. And then, what are your metrics? You gotta agree on those too. In other words, if you talk, uh, instructional leadership, which is student achievement, what are you gonna measure? You gotta agree on what you're gonna measure, where you started, where you're baselined. So if it's literacy in elementary school, and you say to the superintendent, and superintendent says, yes, we want to see more children on grade level, reading on grade level of a book, I have thirty graphs. Okay, yeah, that's gonna be one that we're looking at, we're gonna measure that. Where are we now? So you gotta know where you are, baseline lines. And so, what are we gonna commit to that's fair for growth? All of those things. And then, when it's time to do the evaluation, he will simply submit to you, it could be electronic, if you got something, you can just load it, upload it. And you get it, you read it, you'll see here's what you're doing.
All the evidence.
And, and it is what he did, he did do that. And he did a good job of it, you know, it, it was, it was streamlined, but he did a great job of presenting evidence. It's just, we had been used the one way and, you know, that's what it was.
So you, you need to come together for another session and session. That's a session we, we provide, well, I know, if you, if you're open.
Sam just did this for the Catholic schools for their superintendent's evaluation, and they were very, very faithful.
That was a series of meetings and sessions to get me to the point of having a conversation, so.
That's where the January.
Here are the steps, the best practices that you should go through when you are making sure that you get this annual, and it's effective. If you follow these steps, and you see number five, boards be trained on process and instrument.
But just like, just like we talked about, uh, Dr. Beez, that does a calendar for you, budget-wise, and you typically adopt a budget calendar? You should do the same thing with the, with the evaluation process. You all should agree upon a calendar, which means every year we're going to do X around the end of the spring, which uses when you do your summative. And usually, you do your summative at the end of the, near the end of the spring. But at the same time, you do your summative, then you begin to develop goals going until your next fiscal year.
So are we doing this like a teach process? We do, uh, we do a first one, then a, then a second one?
Well, it depends on how you develop your calendar. It's up to you, how you develop a calendar, but it could be similar to that.
Yeah, we always did a mid-year.
So can you develop that with us?
Yes.
Okay.
At least a, a formative mid-year to let him know informally how he's doing. He might tell you, well, you know, because this issue came up, annexation came up, it's pulled me off of this facility's one, so is it okay if we put more weight on this this year? Yeah, so you just work together on it.
And mid-year is recommended because when you start the school year, usually July one. Most superintendents wanna know, okay, what, what does a board expect of me? And that's, that's fair. And so, in July, his or her plans are built based on what this organization, organization expects. So then, they're working from July up until the end of that school year. But around the Christmas to January marks the mid-year point. Then, at that point, typically, the best practice is to, for the team to come together and talk about how we're doing, that's formative, with all of those. That's not the, the end-all, be-all evaluation, but it's an, it's an impact check, so that he reports to you on where he feels we are with these things. And you respond and interact, say, yeah, I agree, but I think we need to move, uh, with more traction here, there, or elsewhere. Then, then there are no surprises at the end of the year when it's time to do a summative. Because you did an impact check at the end of the year, and superintendents usually appreciate that because they wanna know, you know, how you feel about the work and all of those things. So, those things help move you into the next piece, that's why you see that first bullet there.
Alright, so we have two minutes left.
Two, alright.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Alright, so you have these?
Yeah, it's all here, um, on the way, you know, the best practices, how you conduct it and all that, and the indicators, what it means when you give a particular grade. You know, um, if you click through, you'll see, um, the next one.
This one you want?
Yeah, so this.
We talked about this, getting the evaluation, build the instrument, this is really where you are, this is what you need to be doing.
Yeah.
You know, because with this being October, and it sounds as if you all haven't agreed upon what you're gonna be measuring yet.
For this year.
Yeah, for this year, you know, so you all have to come together to agree on that. Remember, it's collaboration, it's not just a board doing it all.
So you said that January, we could, we could, we need to do a, maybe a retreat in January, maybe that second week in January?
Well, the question I have is, is this, if you're gonna do that, will you be discussing what you're gonna be evaluating, evaluating him on by the end of the year? Which been, which means that he's been working from all, all.
All the time.
And you don't know yet?
So he has no, mm-hmm. He measures for this year.
Yeah, he doesn't, but we've been doing this all along, and we, that's, that's why we gotta stop and get together.
Right, and it takes time.
You all need to come together and think about what you need to do, because clock's ticking on that.
It's painful, I know.
That's not something, I would, I would be waiting till, on January to try to do that.
So you, do, we need to do about next month?
I would say, as soon as you all can agree to come together to have a conversation about, because your superintendent may think differently. He may feel like, okay, I know what the board wants me to do. But you won't, if you don't come together, you have to talk to find out. He might say, I know, you, you said you wanted me to do these five things. And that's what he's working hard to do. But if you don't come together and have that conversation, you don't know the answers. So that's probably what you need to do. And then that'll, that'll inform the rest of this. Right?
And we can help you with that.
All of these are just examples of ratings, you can do those the way that you want, if you want to do that. You have this as well?
So I, you know, since you're developing your process, this is a best practice, that you, you evaluate him individually, and come together as a board, and make a decision on each indicator, then the board chair talks to him. He, he can do his responses and come back to y'all and talk about it. Then, we always had to, um, we, we voted on it in public, and, you know, you'll make sure that you're doing everything legally with your counsel.
Another thing, remember we said about collaboration, you see that first one? See, maybe what, what best practice is, when you know what you're gonna be evaluating, and you've agreed on it, then also, your superintendent will submit to you how he thinks, uh, on these ratings. And that doesn't end up being, being the, that's not the end-all, right? But you utilize that as input and feedback on what you're doing. You know, so you don't have to do that, that's the, that's the best practice. Some boards decide they don't want to, because. Absolutely, absolutely. That's part of that training, the board will talk to you about that, because that, that session is only used for evaluation, right? You make decisions on how you. But it's, it's much, but you discuss to say, okay, whether they're emerging, or they're exceeding standard, or we need to move. Sometimes, you're sitting like this, you're like, doing well, maybe they can do it right.
So we, we need to wrap up so y'all can get moving, but we do have evaluations in here, if you give us any feedback, we always appreciate feedback on how it's gonna grow.
Alright, hold on, let's, everyone, let's, let's, let's let, let's let our guests sort of give us their final message.
Okay, actually, that's the last slide.
Yeah, this is, I know we're, we're three minutes over.
Saying we lost control of the group now.
I think so.
It's good when the group gets excited.
Yeah, I, I love it. Call us if you have any problems and questions. That's myself, that's Sam's number, I mean, we're here for you. It's on there.
Everything's in there. Also, in your folder, you have an evaluation document that we need you to complete, because we try to get feedback on how we are providing information to you. Because we're working to do this work, I hope you see differently and customizing it. Um, so, score it and give us honest feedback. Also, did we pass around the credit sheet yet?
Yes, and so, we were missing somebody on there?
Yeah, Ms. Faber.
Did you write her in?
Just write in, write in the first, because you're gonna get three hours wholeboard credit for today. Yeah, and so, if you were to have us come back and do training, you get additional wholeboard credit for that as well. So we can come back and provide that kind of service. On November one, we're doing a safety, uh, conference, I don't know if y'all have any need for that, that's in Middle Georgia. And then we got it, new board member orientation for two days. Do you have anybody to do that? No, she's already had it. Uh, one rise.
Did he did Marquis?
It's a fuck like that. Oh, okay. One rise is where?
November first.
We like to, I do those training here, this is so.
So, safety one. Because if it was in, both of them.
That's right here at home for you guys to give you some workup. Because we got some workshops that we got to do, we're gonna do a, uh, middle health summer.
So, is there a way for you to make this copy?
Pick the location for that.
Um, sure, can I make a copy?
When your other board members have gotten their training, watch the video, because that's stable, allow you to do that. Then have them sign it, and your copy is sent to me, so they get the credit, and the board gets the credit.
She did sign it.
Oh, okay.
No, Dr. Nunez just asked that you all each have one of these.
Alright, well, let's, uh, thank our guests.
Thank you for having us.
I'm, I'm sure the information's in there, I have, I just got it this morning, Mr. Griffin's office, right on.
So, Madam Vice Chair, um, we have a fifteen-minute segment on there, I don't know if the board has a need for an executive session, so we can adjourn now, if you do not, but if we need to do that, um, I'm not really, really glad that piece is on there, except I know it has been requested.
It was requested the weekend, not bad.
Does anyone, does anyone need that?
Especially, especially from, uh, we don't need this plan, but that's.
Let's do, let's do an executive session. Bring that gap, and take those in.
At this time, I mean, most of John's meeting, the meeting.